All right, good morning, folks. Happy Friday. Thank you all for meeting us bright and early. This is, of course, the November 7th meeting of the New London Planning Board, talking zoning and ADUs. Just a reminder, we're recording this, hopefully, this week. So, we're gonna just jump right in.
Yeah, so, just so everyone is aware, last week's recording, because we lost power in the middle of the meeting, and then had to start it again, the file was corrupted, so I'm not sure. At this point, it doesn't look like we're gonna get anything out of that recording. They've sent it to the company that is like the IT support for it, to see if anything can be saved of it, but just FYI. Hopefully, it's less windy this morning, so we'll do a little better. So, this week's amendments, we're going to talk about two that are required by statute. So, because there were RSA changes, we have some work to do on updating them, and I think we've talked about both of these at some point during the somewhat exhausting legislative session last year, so neither should be a total surprise. But the first one to talk about is how we define a family in the zoning ordinance. And so, the definition of family plays into the usage of single-family, two-family, multifamily. Everywhere that appears in the zoning ordinance, you fall back to the family definition for what that looks like. What happened in the legislature is that you can no longer, so if you can see on the ones I've passed out, and it's the same up on the screen, we formally said, you know, "One or more persons occupying a single-family dwel-- or a single-dwelling unit, provided that unless all persons are related by blood, marriage, civil union, adoption, or guardianship, no such family shall contain more than five persons." So essentially, what this was, it's very common in college towns where you were limiting and saying, "If there's a group of you renting a building together, or any sort of domicile, you can't have more than five unrelated individuals." What the legislative decision was, is that we can no longer confine that to relationship. And so, we need to remove the portion about being related, whether it's by blood or another manner, essentially saying, "You can't treat renters who might be joining together to rent as roommates, any different than you would a family." So, while it doesn't say we can't limit a dwelling unit to five people, I think most of us can agree, we don't want a family of six being told that they can't live in their home, or whatever that magic number is. So, the part that's struck, we absolutely have to remove. The part that's in yellow, we do still have some power to limit that, but I'm not sure there is a number that is going to be all-encompassing, so that we make sure that any actual family would not be thrown out of their home, when all of a sudden, they find out that they think they're having their fifth kid, and it's twins, and that puts them over, and we have to go tell them that they have to sell their house. So, it's a difficult thing to talk about. I do think that the environment around this has changed a little bit, with the college being forced to live on campus, that the concerns that we had once upon a time, when there were multifamily buildings up and down Main Street, filled with college kids, that doesn't really exist these days. And so, I think perhaps it's something that was outdated in our ordinance anyways, but that's the sort of update. And I do have some copies of the bill itself, if you, I didn't print tons of them, but if you want to see them, I can also just sort of read it out loud to you. So, I should say, we do have the ability to limit per bedroom, so I can read this to you. "In its exercise of powers granted under this subdivision, the legislative body of a city, town, village, district, or county in which there are located unincorporated towns or unorganized places shall not adopt any ordinance that restricts the number of occupants of any dwelling unit to less than two occupants per bedroom, and the governing body therefore shall not enforce any such ordinance. Such legislative body shall not adopt any zoning ordinance within a municipality that discriminates based on the familial or nonfamilial relationship or marital status among the occupants of the dwelling units, including but not limited to college students, and the governing body therefore shall not enforce any such ordinance. Nothing in this section shall prohibit the enforcement of the state building code or state fire code." So, with the limiting the number of occupants per bedroom, we do have that power. I do think it's also a tricky thing to enforce. If you have a two-bedroom house, and all of a sudden, you have a third kid, you know, are we going to go in and tell you, "You have to sell your house," or "You have to give up your rental apartment?" Because we can't make that constriction based on, because it's your child, and not three roommates sharing. And so, it puts us in a tricky position to put any fixed number to it.
A question about this. We haven't talked about the kids, and not counting kids, as part of the five. Is that, is that, is my understanding about that correct? That it's really gotta be five adults, people more than 18?
Yeah, and, you know, I still sort of question if you can, and that was something, we have an appointment next week with our council for something unrelated, that I was going to ask, but my gut is, is that we can't really restrict on age, because it doesn't give us that power, and so, state law, we have the powers given to us by state law, and so, because it doesn't explicitly say you can restrict by age, or you can, I don't think that we do. But, that being said, I didn't really see in the old law where it said that either, and we did, so that's where my question came.
You know, I related to that. I wonder why they do not explicitly state that in the law, if it's supposed to be something that we have purview over. The other thing is, you know, this may be sort of tangentially related, but the use of the sewer, the use of the water, the use of, you know, the municipal services, I think that increases, maybe not, you know, additively, or even exponentially, but it still adds a drain on the municipal services as the number of occupants go up. Does that play a role in any of this?
It doesn't, because the usage is calculated purely on a bedroom format, so whether you have a five-bedroom house with one person in it, or a five-bedroom house with 10 people in it, the, if it's a septic system, or if you are being charged your expansion permit from the sewer department, or your connection permit from the precinct, it's all equal. Now, the real-life result in that is going to be different, but from a regulatory and permitting perspective, it doesn't change it.
Okay, I, so in other words, this is what we really need to produce. This is the verbiage we're going to be using going forward. If so, we need to make a sort of a grammatical change. We have one or, the, sort of the definition of family, "One or more persons occupying a single-dwelling unit, comma, or semicolon, 'No such family shall contain more than five persons,' or period, something, there's something wrong with the punctuation.
I think the question is, we might need to get rid of that, is what we're saying.
Yeah, but it says, "One or more persons occupying a single-dwelling unit."
Right, I mean, I think that may become the whole definition.
Oh, the yellow part may come out completely?
That's what we're saying.
Okay, Midian.
And so, that's where we're sort of stuck in the discussion now.
Okay.
It still doesn't track.
"One or more persons occupying a single-dwelling unit."
Period?
Period.
Right, right, and so, that's, the period will go there, if you are okay, if we all agree that we shouldn't be putting a number on the maximum.
It doesn't, I'm just saying, it's hard to read. What are we, what does "one or more persons occupying a single-dwelling unit," is that a family?
That's the definition of family.
Right.
Well, let's, why don't we say that? This is going into the definitions section?
Right, this is copied verbatim from the definitions section.
Okay.
Sorry.
Bear with me. I mean, I think we would, if, if, I think the, I hear your point, Paul. The wording itself is weird right now. If we cut it off there, we can massage the wording, so it's the same thing, if that's where we're cutting it off. I think the discussion is whether we're cutting it off, and not having a number.
Right.
So, if, once we get to, yeah, that's not even a full sentence, right? That would be like a fragment, but I mean, the point is, if we get rid of the other part.
I think in the definitions section, it fits, because it says, "A family is defined as..."
Right.
I would, I would just add, in your discussion, that you're gonna have, is that we aren't, I don't, I think you can make the argument that by leaving the thing about the child 18, we're, we're not limiting the number of people. It's an exception, and that may make a difference. I don't, I don't know, but I would just suggest that.
So, I think the question then becomes, though, if we're not going to tie a number to it, does that just become irrelevant? Because there, where it says, "In determining the maximum number of persons allowed, children under the age of 18, any resident shall not be counted," for not putting a maximum, we just don't need that.
Right, I agree. I think if we're gonna have the exception of the kids, then it makes sense to have the two bed, two people per bedroom, but if you're going to get rid of all things, what's the point in the kids? It's irrelevant.
Right.
So, I mean, I've just sort of copied it up on the screen. I know it's hard to read, but just so that we have sort of real time. So, obviously, the one above is the original, so to speak, and then the one below, it would be simply, "Family, one or more persons occupying a single-dwelling unit."
Period.
Correct. Sorry that this keeps jumping out. So, and then talks about family and households being synonymous, but...
Was the only reason, you talked about the college, was that, or was that the primary reason before?
It was very common in college towns to have these regulations. Other towns might have had it too, for boarding houses and things, but it was predominantly college towns, and there was actually a consortium of college towns who hired a lobbyist to, to lobby against this bill. You know, places like Durham, where there is a lot of students that live off-campus, and there always will be, you know, they were very concerned about that. And there are still fire codes in place for, you know, you can't have, you know, bedrooms that, there's no access to egress and things, that you're packing people in.
Does it provide protection for renters? Like, say, for instance, I'm renting a house, and I have a septic, and so I have concerns, and would it in some way protect me with a two-bedroom house from them not putting six adults in it? Or is that a different category?
It could. I think the landlord is still able to constrain in their lease agreement.
Yeah.
I don't believe that this would circumnavigate that.
Okay.
I think, in that context, the times where we've had questions about this in the last few years was in relation to a short-term rental, and in that situation, it's nearly impossible. You can't, and this, honestly, this has probably been the most unenforceable part of our zoning ordinance for the last however many years, because you can look at two people, and maybe they don't look related, but they are by definition, or, you know, maybe they look related, but they're not, you know, so it's, it's virtually impossible, and on short-term rentals, it was even more impossible, because by the time we find out about it, the people are long gone. You know, they rented a place for the weekend, and, you know, they're gone. So, I will say, it was probably something that also provided a little bit of false sense of security, where we might have had the language in the ordinance, but...
Yeah, so that sounds like there's really not much benefit at this point.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the legislature's objective is to just create an even playing field.
Can I just ask, we still need family as the definition in there, because it's used elsewhere, right?
Correct, so for the one family, which is a building style, obviously, in those places, it still gets used.
Right, and I know that we say that, so I just wanted to make sure that because of that, that's the reason we have to have it.
Yep.
Because it's essentially saying, you know, this, this doesn't really mean anything.
Right, yeah, right. Yeah, could we change "single-family" to "little F family"? Sure, probably. If we got to a point where there was maybe something else that we needed to define family for, that could be helpful.
Are we also going to have to chase this through everywhere family is used, and make sure it's not redundant, or, just because, like, there's...
So, it's used 73 times in the zoning ordinance, when I did my word find the other day, and it was almost entirely "single," "two," and "multi" over and over and over again. I think there was, I think there was a spot in the daycare section that used it, that was not, you know, in the usage of a building type, but everywhere should flow back to this.
So, we'll walk through those other 72 now, then, right?
It just brings to mind, I can't get it within my mind, but "two-family" means, then, what does it really mean?
A two-family, so... I always forget where it actually... There's "multifamily," but why wasn't "two" under the Ts?
Under "uses permitted in residential districts."
Right, that's where it is, under "uses permitted," but as far as the definition...
It's not under dwelling, like, wrong.
Oh, yes, it is under dwelling, that is exactly, it always throws me, that it's... Yep, so it's "dwelling, comma, two-family." So, it's a detached residential building containing two dwelling units with a common roof and common wall, or common ceiling and slash floor, designed for occupancy by more than two families. By not more than two families, yes, sorry. And so, then that's by...
"Family" includes an unlimited number of people.
Because we're gonna make this somewhat toothless, right, so it kind of matters less, but it also, what are we saying?
I'm just trying to parse it. Does, does this imply you could have multiple living units? Since there's two families?
You mean in a neighborhood, or standalone?
No, no, in, in, a two-family, what we consider to be a...
Right, because dwelling unit is then, so it's a multifamily dwelling unit, and then we use two dwelling units, or a two-family dwelling unit, and then we use dwelling unit in there, which has its own definition of one-room or rooms connected together constituting a separate independent housekeeping establishment for owner occupancy rental or lease.
So, would you take the position, you can only have two kitchens, then?
Correct.
Okay.
You still have to comply with codes.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
You have to comply with the code, so you get the fire department in there, and they say, "No, you..."
Not in a two-family.
Not even in, they don't have to do it?
Multifamily.
Oh, it would only be...
Yep, so, "single" and "two-family" are exempt from the planning board process, and so the Fire Marshal's Office takes over building permit for three or more units in commercial.
Oh, okay.
Which is why, like, the Cottage Lane, there are four units in there now, but when they were constructed as duplexes, they never came to the planning board, because they were duplexes on individual lots. And that's built into state law, that's not a New London ordinance, that's "single" and "two-family" being exempt.
Drop that, drop down to dwelling, multifamily? It seems that family there ought to be capitalized, but, okay, so, so the, the real regulation here is on how many kitchens you can have?
Well, it's sort of...
You're talking about that as being the litmus test of a family unit in a, in a dwelling?
Well, you could have 100 families, or you could have 100 people constituting one family.
Right.
But you can only have so many dwelling units.
Correct.
And that, those dwelling units, it sounds like you're saying, are identified by a kitchen.
Well...
And, you know, sanitation and that sort of thing, but...
The difference between a boarding house or a dwelling unit is a kitchen, a bedroom with a...
Individual.
I think.
Sorry.
So, you want to read it, what it's, what it's gonna be?
Sure. So, we just have, "Family, one or more persons occupying a single-dwelling unit. For the purpose of this ordinance, the term 'family' and term 'household' shall be synonymous and interchangeable." And if you want to put some maximum on per bedroom, that is probably something that would never come true, but it's a safeguard, whether it's, you know, no more than four people per bedroom, or something, you can, I think you might get questions and people thinking that that's outrageous, that it may end up causing more confusion than the value of it.
Yeah, I, I personally, just thinking back to that, if you're not going to have a difference between under 18 and over, I just, I cannot imagine someone being like, "Yeah, I can't wait till my one bedroom has four adults," or my neighbor, my two-bedroom has eight adult, like, I think we're just, you're opening a door where the disc, I don't know, I just, it's different when it's, when it's, like you said, someone suddenly has twins, and they're like, "Oh, no, that's different." I think it's common sense beyond that. I think you're just opening up someone, being like, "Well, I can have four people in this." But, I'm good with it.
Yeah, anyone else have thoughts? I'm okay with it as well. Okay. Good, Paul?
Yeah, I just didn't want to unintentionally create the opportunity to have multifamily unlimited by units, but I think dwelling units is fine.
Agreed.
I have a question.
Yep.
When do multi-dwelling units morph into apartment buildings?
Apartments are a multifamily.
Good, dear, good.
Okay. All right, so, now we get, if we're all set to move on, into the accessory dwelling unit changes. So, I know we've talked about this a few times, but just for the benefit of the recording, if people are trying to prepare themselves for town meeting, and they eventually watch it, I think it makes sense to just sort of give a brief overview, so bear with me, because I know you guys have, have heard this, but, so, the legislature took on multifan, or accessory dwelling units last legislative season, and changed how we can administer the process, and what we can allow. And so, now, we are required to offer detached and attached units by right. We currently only allowed attached units by a conditional use permit, which brought everyone to the planning board. So, by right means that they come in and build their, their unit through a building permit, and then it's administrative approval from myself as the zoning administrator, and Ashley as the town administrator, and that power has been granted with the designees of the select board. And so, just as any of you have applied for building permits for work at your house, that's how this would be done. Many of the same safeguards are still in place, as far as maximum of two bedrooms can still be on the books, maximum of 1,000 square feet is still something we can put on the books, you could go higher than that, but, but that's still allowable, requiring that they show you that they have utilities, whether that's septic or sewer expansion, signed by the selectmen, and requiring that they have one of the units be lived in by the owner of the property, that they have all the setbacks that are met, with the exception of, if they have a detached structure that is legally non-conforming and sits in the setback. So, picture a garage that was built 40 years ago, that's in the setbacks. Conversion of that garage to a detached accessory dwelling unit is allowable through the RSA now. And so, that is an example of where setbacks wouldn't have to be met, but there's no new encroachment into those setbacks, it's just a change of what is occurring within that structure. But if you are bringing a new structure to the town for a building permit, it would be bound by all of the existing setbacks. And I think that's, there's other things that we have had to eliminate, like the off-street parking. We can say, "Off-street parking shall be provided," but we can't limit it to one per bedroom, the maximum we can say is one per unit, so we can just leave that as...
The minimum, you mean? Is it minimum or maximum?
The maximum, we can require them to...
So, it has to have one off-street parking?
Right, so we can say, "Off-street parking shall be provided," but we can't say, "Right now, we have it one space per bedroom." And so, if you had a two-bedroom, that would be two un, two spots, and we can't say that, because it's based on unit of one. So, we can leave the part that says, "Off-street parking shall be provided," and that garage spaces meet the requirement, we can't tell them that they have to have any more than the minimum. And then, another component of this that we can't control are any standards that have a design to them, that we are not imposing on single-family structures. So, we currently had a couple of pieces in there about the doors had to face the side or the rear of the property, and because this was a conditional use permit, you guys had the latitude to accept designs that were, that strayed from that, and we did do that a few times. I'm thinking back to the one that they were going to use the mudroom door, that had existed in this house for, you know, decades anyways, faced the street. So, you had waived that before, now, because we don't require that of single-family homes, we can't require that of an ADU. We also always had the constraint that you needed to have a connecting door in the building between the two units, and that can't be required anymore. So, I think that basically brings us through the things that are required. Oh, and a main takeaway, and I know this is something that I think Paul wants to talk about too, is that we have to allow them in all zones and areas where single-family homes are allowed. And so, we can't divorce those, those two things, or have restricted areas where single-family is only allowed, and we're not allowing those people in ADU. I think that is essentially all of the...
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a couple of things. In definition of ADU, there's some grammar that needs to fix, or punctuation. Residential living unit that is, and we've marked out within or attached, so it goes, residential living unit that is to a single-family dwelling.
Subordinate to.
Right.
Well, I think it should, I think we need... I'm sorry, I think we need to tie it to the lot more clearly, because we say later, "You can only have one per single-family dwelling." But what we're really talking is on the same lot, right?
Could we say contiguous?
Well, subordinate to?
So, if we say, "A residential living unit that is subordinate to a single-family dwelling..." So if we say, "A residential living unit that is subordinate to a single-family dwelling and that provides independent living facilities for one or more persons, including provisions for sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation on the same parcel of land as the principal dwelling unit it accompanies." Is that, does that get at the point, Paul, or?
I think we covered a different place, but I think that's, I don't know what subordinate means, but that's, that's fine.
The one other point I was going to make too, and this is something that the Housing Commission has talked about, and you guys obviously have the power to do with it what you wish, but the idea being that any zoning amendments that go forward on the things required by statute, their feeling is just change the pieces that we have to change by statute to come into compliance. If you feel differently and there are things that you wanted to change outside of those things, we would break them up into two independent zoning amendments, because there are components we have to change. Right now, we are out of compliance. This was weird that it went into effect on July 1st, that doesn't usually happen. But make sure that those things pass, we have to get those passed. If there was something else that you wanted to approach, we would handle that under a separate amendment. You know, the Housing Commission's feeling and working through all of that with the consultants has been just change the things that we need to change and let this play out, see if people take advantage of it, if, how it works, if there are things that are constraints, but that this gives people the flexibility that, you know, I think you guys have wanted to allow them for a while and just to live within the constraints of what we already had on the books.
I have a question. On E3, it says, "All applicable setbacks shall be met." Do you, does anybody think it's necessary or good to identify that the setbacks don't have to be complied with, given sort of a grandfathered state of a garage or any other structure on the lot that's being used as an ADU?
Yep, that's a good point. So if we said, "All applicable setbacks shall be met for newly constructed-"
Yep.
"-structures or additions?"
Yep.
I, yeah, I think, I agree, and I think we need to get the provision in there that we have in the rest of the code, that you can't make them more non-conforming.
So that, that is under its own section in the ordinance under the legal non-conforming article? Article 20? That stands over all sections?
We just got to be careful not to grant something here that would overturn that.
We, we wouldn't, I mean, that exists over all sections of the ordinance. So what, how do you think this would say someone could break the setbacks?
I'm sorry?
How is it that you're-
Well, I don't, it's not here, so we're going to, we're going to say something about if there's an existing garage that's non-conforming. It can be an ADU, but what we want to say is you can't make it more non-conforming, you can't add a room that further makes it non-conforming.
That interferes with the setback further, you mean?
Yes, well, whatever the non-conformity-
The way it is now-
Can you just say what you just said, because I think that covered it, the way you just worded it?
So, "All applicable setbacks shall be met for new construction," and then the-
And you had said, "or additions," which I don't know if that, maybe new construction is sort of including that, but-
But making it clear is-
Maybe that would cover what you're saying?
Yep.
So you're covering detached and attached, with those words?
And I think, so though the conversion for existing non-conformance is allowable by state law, I do think it's one of those times that, and we did this a few years ago, like with the septic stuff, where we restated things that were given to us in the power of state law clearly, but then when they changed state law faster than we did, those things were not updated, and so we eliminated those sort of redundancies. So I think if we put it in here, saying that anything new has to meet setbacks, we're conveying the principle there is that something not new may not have to meet setbacks, but we're letting the state law control that so that we're not chasing that.
Right, and having to update everything every time, there's a change there.
The look on your face, Paul, leads me to believe you think it should be articulated separately, or?
You know, you're not going to articulate the non-conformity provision? Is that-
I think letting that fall to where it is in state law is clean, but if you think that it, if you feel differently.
Well, I don't think state law necessarily says you can't make it more non-conforming.
Is it possible to say something like, "All applicable setbacks shall be met as per section of thus and such," opposed to elucidating the new construction either as a structure or in an addition? And that would then therefore keep everything up to date without having to change the particular reference?
I'm having trouble putting my hands on the non-conforming building provision.
So, yep, so it's Article 20, so page 79, and then it is B5. So alteration, expansion, repair, replacement of all other legal non-conforming structures. "All other legal non-conforming structures may be altered, expanded, repaired, or replaced, provided that it does not become more non-conforming within the terms of this ordinance or provided that all other standards of this ordinance are met."
I think a reference would be valuable.
Okay.
And not necessarily really specific about not, no, not making it more non-conforming. I hope that makes sense.
So, "All applicable setbacks shall be met for-"
I think you can just refer to-
That's what I'm about to, so, "All applicable setbacks shall be met for new construction and addition in compliance with," and I would actually say Article 20B and just leave it at that, because there may be other sections like there in the waterfront that apply. Okay. Paul, I do want to touch on, I know some thoughts that you had brought up.
I want to say, number one, I agree with how we should proceed to get something passed. And all I wanted, Adam and I have had some conversations over email. All I wanted, I thought it was appropriate for the board to step back and say, "Okay, this is what the state has said. We went through this process two years ago, and we know there's a lot that the voters have said about this." And I actually raised the question, "Are there any more restrictions that we should consider or talk about, consider, or propose? Number one, that makes sense, number two, that might demonstrate to the town that we heard what they said." So that was the genesis of some thoughts that I threw out there. One, I have absolutely no idea legally whether we can actually treat non-conforming lots differently from conforming lots. But as I thought about it, I said, "I think all of us could go around and find lots that no matter what the setbacks and everything we have, it doesn't make sense to load up another dwelling unit on that lot." But maybe the state has taken that away from us. I don't know the legality of treating them differently.
And so that is in that same article, it's the next piece down, so I'll just read that out. So they are non-conforming, but because of the way this is written, they become conforming. So it's, "See legal non-conforming lots. All legal non-conforming lots, any lot with less area or frontage than required which is lawfully established, recorded, and taxed as a lot of record before the enactment or amendment of this ordinance shall be deemed conforming lots." So, and that's very, basically every zoning ordinance in the state, if not wider, says those sorts of things. Things that might not be included in that are variances, if a lot was, if granted a variance there. I wonder, Paul, if, I've been thinking about how do we sort of put something in here that reminds people? It doesn't necessarily change what applies, but it might remind people that there are other restrictions in place in this ordinance that may confine their ability to add on, particularly with the shoreline overlay district, because I know that's where a lot of the angst came from in the last time. So saying something like, you know, "All other provisions of this ordinance, which apply to single-family homes, apply here." So that more or less, where like the shoreline overlay reduces the amount of the percentage of the land area that you are able to have impervious, that anyone who doesn't live in the shoreline doesn't have to play by those rules. If someone wants to use a portion of their 20% of impervious area to accommodate either an attached or a detached ADU, that's their choice. However, that means they're reducing what they can actually put in their house or their garage or their asphalt, you know, all of those areas that also go into that calculation, you get 20%, it's your decision how to utilize that, but you don't get any more just because you have more latitude in how to break that up. And then part B being the conversation on septics, where every lot anywhere has a maximum septic loading, right? You know, you might be able to get a two-bedroom house because you have terrible soils and that's all you can get is a two-bedroom septic. Someone else may be able to get an eight-bedroom septic. But if that's your maximum, that means that if you are going to take four bedrooms out for your main house, you might only be able to get a two-bedroom ADU in addition to that, because they're not, the sum of the two units is not just the bedroom count as far as septic loading goes. So making that clear, that those things all still apply in the maximums that would exist whether you just had a single family or whether you're dividing those, do you think that would be helpful? Do you think that's a way of, we don't really have the power to constrain them further, but putting something in that just helps voters realize that those things are still in place?
Well, I think it's, I think that is important, that if, if those restrictions are not on, you know, included in this, then, you know, it's important that we see a way to do that if we can. The second thing on septic, that, two things on septic. Number one, you know, we're, as I understand it, we're in the first stage of really addressing the septic through the health regulations and things like that. There was broad discussion, there was, as I understand it, decision made to take the first step, which is just lightly ask people to pump every three years. And there are other steps that other towns have taken, and there were steps that were considered. I don't know where that stands, but there's obviously a lot of talk about it, given the wetlands and everything. I don't know whether this would fly, but I had in mind a provision that said, "If you are building an ADU in the water, in the shoreline district, you must have full testing, not just tank, but tank and field testing." And I know that there's some weird regulation that says, even though your system may be 35 years old, if it's a five-bedroom and you only have four and you're building one more, you don't have to do anything till it fails. I mean, that's how my understanding is, I don't know exactly how they get to that. That seems stupid. And I don't know if there's anything we can, we should consider or we should think about, maybe for the shoreline, totally, but in terms of building additional units, and I'm thinking of non-conforming lots, because most of the shoreline is non-conforming lots, it seems, it might be something to be addressed. May not be in this, at this time or whatever, but, and I think we heard loud and strong from the voters that they were concerned about the water, they're more concerned now, I'm sure, with what's happened. I'm sorry.
When properties go on the market that are on the water, we require a site assessment. And that now, with the new offerings, the buyer is supposed to pay for the site assessment, which doesn't make much sense, but would it behoove us to require someone who is going to add an ADU near water to provide a site assessment before the septic system?
So they have to provide us an approved septic design anyways? And so that's in here for the, where does it say, "Shall?" So it's E9. "An ADU shall conform to the requirements of a single-family dwelling unit, including provisions for water supply and sewage disposal, meeting the requirements of this ordinance and applicable state regulations."
Okay.
And so they have to provide us the copy of their DES approval for however many in the main house.
But also, the approval would be great, but then we have to figure out whether or not that septic system is working, functioning, you know, is it leaching into the lake or something like that? I mean, that's the difference in that, a site assessment will tell you that.
Right, but so their designer has to determine their existing system in order to design a new system?
That's all covered, that's great.
It should be, and the state law changing last year requiring when, when properties within the shoreline overlay district, or within the shoreline protection area, which is essentially the state's overlay district, that matches ours, but requiring them to go through that process when they change is on the books. Obviously, that doesn't, if somebody is converting a house that they currently own, you know, they wouldn't have to go through that step, they'd have to go through this step of providing us the design. The implementation, I do see your point, Paul, that it is funny, I mean, that's in state law about the, you know, the design versus implementation. I can't say that there's never been a waterfront project that doesn't implement a new septic when doing a total renovation or new construction, but I'm not sure that I've seen one. Typically, the projects-
I didn't understand what you just said.
So if someone is fully renovating a house on the water or building new, I have not seen them utilize the existing septic that was in place. They are completely redoing it. Most of the time, it's because the existing leach field is directly where they want to build. And so they just physically have to move it somewhere. And so then they're implementing a totally new system, oftentimes further away from the lake. And a lot of like the non-conforming lots on Lamson Lane or other areas, there's one on Bunker that this happened last year, I think it was, that the selectmen had to grant the easement across the road, but the septics typically go across the street. And either the people own the lots across the street or they have some sort of an easement to use the lot across the street, because the non-conforming lot on the lakeside is so small or so constrained that there's physically nowhere for it. So that sometimes creates a safeguard, but when those people don't have the advantage of a lot across the street, that just further constrains what they can actually build out on their non-conforming side.
I don't disagree with that, but think of the number of ADUs that you have approved or that have been approved in the process. Did anybody build a new septic?
Yeah, I mean, I think almost- I mean, I think almost half of our ADUs are new construction, and so they had totally new septics to start. And then several of them have gone through expansions of their septic because they simply didn't have the capacity in the septic system that they had to accommodate an ADU. And then there's three or four that were on the sewer system, and so there wasn't a, an ADU.
Okay, I, my data points are wrong because I only hear about the ones that I cited before that says you really don't have to test your whole system. If you've got a five-bedroom system and only four bedrooms and you build an ADU-
Now, they have to have a new design because five bedrooms in a single unit is not equal to four bedrooms in one unit and one bedroom in another unit because there's a base load for a dwelling unit. And so the sum of a one-bedroom ADU in a four-bedroom house is greater than a five-bedroom house. And so they have to provide us a design that states they, it, it, there's a separate line that says four-bedroom house plus one bedroom, bedroom studio apartment. And so that's right on the letter from DES.
And, okay, then-
And sometimes-
I may be wrong, but I have been told that if you have the design, you can use the current system until it fails.
Yes, that is correct. But that system would have been inspected as part of the designer's work to design the, the system that goes in place. Because they have to determine what the health and capacity of that system is before they submit their design. Because if it's in failure, they have to, that has to be known because when something is in failure, you have 90 days to replace it, and that's in state law and health regulations. And so that inspection has been done.
Okay, what are we finding in the, in the transaction situation? Are we finding failing systems?
I have not personally had- You know, I've been involved with that sort of thing, but I, I know that it's really an important situation to have all of this done before the sale. But, and it's, and it's a good way to check to make sure it's not, anything's leaking into the water.
I can reach out to, I mean, because failures are reported to the health officer, whether that is a failure discovered by the homeowner, whether that's a failure discovered by an inspection on a transaction, no matter what, they're reported to the health officer. So I can reach out to Nick Baer and ask him how many failures we've had this year. I'm only familiar with one that was not on the waterfront, but I will ask him how many, if that is a data point that is helpful, because in theory, that should be encompassing of those numbers too, to give you a comprehensive look.
Okay. And the other, the only other question I have, which is, I know they have to have this assessment done. Is it what's known as a complete test? I mean, costs a couple thousand dollars, they're actually-
As far as what is performed at the test?
Yes.
Okay, so you have the septic design, but then you have to make sure that the leach field is functioning properly and that the tank is, you know, everything has to be proved that it's working. And if it's failed, then obviously you have to fix it. And it used to be that if something failed, then you could replace it in kind, which is not the case anymore. You have to go back and start square one. So it's, it's really an important piece of waterfront property.
Well, I think whether as a board we decide to address this in another amendment or we put all this knowledge together and explain in terms, in terms of trying to get this, the first one passed, that this-
The ADU?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You're talking about the ADU?
Yes.
Getting the ADU would have passed.
That we be able to say, there's been a lot more protection of, of the Shoreland. And I'm not sure, but I, it seems to me we should be very clear that when someone is asking or is exercising their right to build an ADU or to create an ADU, that they are doing the same kind of testing that it would be required if they were selling the property.
I'm not sure that we can treat that ADU differently than we treat a single-family home, building, bringing a building permit that goes from three bedrooms to four bedrooms, which is essentially the same process right now as what we would do for an ADU. We'd require that new design and then they would implement if there's a failure. So I think the way that it was, the legislation was written, we can't treat them differently than the single-family home where we may be able to build something like that in, is under the health ordinance for the septics that the, that the selectmen passed, which obviously lives outside of the zoning ordinance.
We could do it if we affected-
Apply it. Right, which doesn't live in this section is what I'm saying. So it might not be something that we can add to this section of the ADU amendment, but it might be something that the selectmen could add to the health ordinance that says, you know, exactly that. Maybe we can, Paul, would you be willing to, if I set something up with Nick Baer to sit down with? You, you were on the committee last time when we did it, right? When we did the-
I guess.
I think you came to the, the focus-
I was invited to come and, and, you know, wrote some things and talked to people.
Yeah.
I think that was the extent of it.
And so I think it could be the, sort of a parallel path, but outside of our process, that it might be something that Nick is, you know, interested in discussing too, that maybe the three of us could sit down sometime in the next couple of weeks so that we can, before we move this forward to public hearing, report back on whatever that discussion with Nick has been. And I'm, I assume that health ordinances fall under the same overarching legislation from the RSAs to do this as far as not being able to break them out separately, but that's not a guarantee. Health ordinances are sometimes different, so I think it's a good conversation to have with him, whether we add it in specifically in these individual or whether it's in expansion of any variety. Okay.
Is there some way that we can expand nine? Be nine, E9, where we talk about the requirements of a single-family dwelling and highlight more what the references should be? So, you know, maybe the same references that apply to a single-family dwelling. And that might be, you know, I don't know, sewer testing. It says sewer disposal, but you know, the functioning, different services, I don't know, maybe elucidating it would, and providing a reference to single-family dwelling may answer the question or address the question right from the very beginning.
So I have a, a note here to add, a 12th on here that would say, some sort of a provision, I haven't figured out the language yet, but provision that mentions all standards of this ordinance and overlay district, septic health regulations apply. So just sort of making this kind of all-encompassing catch-all that is just a reminder of, these are the other things that might be out there that you also need to know exist here, so that we're not enumerating them so specifically that when one of them changes or an article number changes, we're caught, but that it's known.
Can we identify the reference, though? You know, all of those things should apply as per whatever the, the section is.
I don't think, I don't think there necessarily-
We can label it just one section. I think there's too much, but I think if we just remind, I hear your point, to make it kind of user-friendly, which I think, you know, makes sense, but I think if, because it is multi, it's occurring in multiple places, I think we just need to say, just a reminder that, that, you know, for number 12, that this actually, everything else applies. Just because then people have that, they're nudged to go check those other parameters.
Right, because if it's not specifically said, people may assume it doesn't apply. And so you're specifically stating this applies and go check it.
Right. And again, it doesn't, just because it's, if we don't list it, it doesn't mean it doesn't apply, like it's on them to understand that other things apply, but this is a way, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm saying this is a way that we can just call attention to the fact that like, go ahead and just un-nudge.
And, I mean, yes, it is on them, but really, it's the job of the town employees too, because we have to check all of those things in order to sign it. And so hopefully, ordinances are written in a manner that most people can read them and understand it without us having to sort of give them a lesson, but that is our job to be able to, someone comes and says, "I want to build an ADU, what do I need to do?" And we go through all of those other things too, but I think this provides clarity before they get to us.
If I were a homeowner and I wanted to build an ADU and I looked at the ordinances and assumed that I'd know, and then I get to your office and you say, "Oh, yes, but this part applies," I'd be ticked.
And I would say most people come to our office long before, you know, in the very early stages. And so most of them come when they're still in the learning and exploration process. So I'd say 95% of people, they, it's not late in the game, they're finding these things out. I did want to-
I would just have one comment that in, in terms of including those, it may well help in the public meeting, the public discussion of now having detached ADUs everywhere, that we're pointing out that all these things apply. And, and just off-the-wall question, what have you seen happening with ADUs in terms of water that aren't on, that are not on town water?
So when they have an existing well?
Yeah.
Honestly, not much. I mean, we don't, the local municipality doesn't permit the wells, that's at the state level, and so-
But do they have separate wells or do they use the same one?
Nine times out of 10, if they have the capacity out of their existing well, they're using a single well. Sometimes there's ledge or something that divides the house from where the new one is. That being said, we've only had one detached ADU and they use the same, this is more sort of what I'm seeing when I do the webinars and that sort of stuff, that there are constraints that might exist. I think sometimes when you have very large properties and the ADU is not actually anywhere near, then you have separate utilities and there's a whole separate septic, there's a whole separate well, but most of the time, same, same well.
How many, how many ADUs have you permitted?
Total since 2016 or, so before 2016, we allowed them, we weren't really tracking them very well. Since then, I think we're at 19 or 20. Since the change in the law, there's been one accessory dwelling unit that's a detached, approved, and that was one that they were building anyways as a bunkhouse essentially, without a kitchen. And so they were three-quarters of the way through the construction, the law changed, they were alerted to that, but whether they spread it in the paper, I'm not sure, but, and so they got an approval to put in a, a very small galley kitchen. And it's a one-bedroom. Honestly, no one will ever be able to see it, it's Harold, unless you have an airplane because it backs up to the runway, but it's Harold Buker's old house, and so it's well off of Shaker Street. But that is the only one that we've had. We've had a lot of inquiries, I would say, and I say a lot, a half dozen, you know, we're not talking, the phones ringing off the hook with them. But that has kind of slowed down. I think there was a lot of media coverage this summer, and so it got people kind of excited and thinking about it. Yeah, I mean, the cost is always going to be a substantial burden. People building ADUs typically are in a situation, whether it's attached or detached, are typically in a situation where there's a personal motivation to getting the ADU that outweighs the financial investment, that they have a family member that they want to house, they have, you know, some other piece of it. You know, it, the sad reality is, construction is just wildly expensive right now. I would say the, the real benefit there comes in that turnover. You know, we've seen already a couple of the ADUs that we have permitted over the years, initially they were built for a child that just got out of college, that, you know, they moved in, they lived there for four or five years, and then they're ready to move on. And so they sort of got their initial use out of it, now they rented it to some, you know, young employee in town. And so the first use of it may not be open-market use, it's still a, you know, a, a good use of it, but it may not be on the open market, but eventually they turn over and become that. We have had two, I think, and frankly, these actually probably need to get subtracted from that 19, but we've had two that we've permitted, and then when they've sold, the new owner has not been making that their domicile, and they've had to tear out the, the kitchen that makes it an ADU. I will fully admit, I think that is something that we will be challenged on legally, whether it's us or another town at some point. It's very clearly enumerated in state laws, so to the extent that they would be successful, I don't know. If they were to try and get a variance, I don't know. I do think it's something that will become a down-the-road problem as we have more houses that have had these turnover in 10, 20 years. But as of right now, I think that that is a necessary safeguard to keep people comfortable with it.
Adam?
I noticed that you included-
David had questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question or maybe some clarification. And I'm sorry, we had a whole, huge discussion about the definition of family, because I know what's happening maybe in some other cities that's going through some of this same discussion, but we do not count children under 18 as the, how many people are living there. What is preventing a person to come in and say, "I have cousins and stepchildren, I, I could have seven kids coming into that dwelling place?" Because they want to come into this town, they want to come in and have the kids go to the school system. We don't put a maximum, a number of people that can go in that, including children.
And so David, those people would have still been excluded under the old definition too, because they were actually related, they wouldn't have counted towards the five-person maximum. So it's really a, a, no change there.
So they could have, they could have six kids coming in with a couple, living in that, yes, because they want to get into the school system, they want to get into this town. And we, and we allow that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, we-
Pardon me?
The state allows it. Is it desirable to include another reminder that ADUs are not short-term rentals?
Yeah, I would say if we do want to include that provision, we break that out into a separate provision on the ballot, because that's not something that's required by statute, it's an optional. I think it is something to consider.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we very much need to do the, here's the clean stuff that has to pass per the state, this is required. We need to keep that very clear so that their people aren't tempted to somehow vote against that. Paul, you had another question?
Yeah. The state statute, does it continue to have the words domicile?
I believe so.
Yeah, one of the dwellings shall be the domicile of the property owner.
Well, the guidance from NHMA says owner occupancy, but I can look at the, obviously-
Sorry, the, the, under owner occupancy, that idea of principal place of residence, I know this came up before, Paul, to your point.
Yeah, I mean, taking the non-regulatory view, we have more pieces of property here that are not occupied year-round, that probably don't constitute domiciles. And how do you- than are not occupied year-round, that probably don't constitute domiciles, and how do, how do you regulate that when somebody comes to you and says, I want to build one?
Typically, we have some level of just awareness, I guess, of the people, whether they're here all the time or not. I can only think of one where we asked the people to, like, see their license, and they showed that that's, this was their residence, we didn't take a copy or anything of it, because I, I guess from a public records standpoint, I don't feel like that's something that should be in a, a building permit file, so it was some level of personal recognizance, I guess you'd say, but we could have, I know we've talked about affidavits before, we've, I think in that situation, I'd have to pull it, I don't want to say the person's name, but I think we had them put in their cover letter, that it was their residence, and then they signed the cover letter. That one was a waterfront home.
The problem we have is, we're eliminating any benefits from the ADU from half or more of the properties, and, you know, I've spoken before about the fact that there are easier ways to get to the same result, I mean, you could say, they are the only ones that occupy it. In other words, if somebody's got a summer home here, and when they're not here, they don't rent it, is that so much different than being the domicile, which means, you have to be a resident for tax purposes, you have to vote here, you have, I, I just throw that out there, that, you know, we're, in one sense, you know, we're wanting, we want to encourage ADUs to help the diversity and everything that this says, and yet, some of the most likely properties that would provide lower income or affordable housing, rentals, are technically eliminated from this, and, you know, the person that sold their property to somebody that was, I don't know what they were going to do with it, but they probably were going to be the only ones that were going to occupy the main property, they had to go in and tear out their, doesn't make a lot of sense, but, I, I throw that out there, I don't, we don't, I don't think we want to address it right now, but it's a problem coming down the road.
Yep. I know we're sort of getting short on time, and there's one other non-ADU thing that I do want to talk to you guys, but I do just want to point to one part of the RSA, that I know there was a lot of discussion and confusion on the last time, that I just want to touch on, and so, Rich, it was about the manufactured home usage, and so, under the accessory dwelling unit section, it says, the municipality may prohibit accessory dwelling units associated with multi-single-family dwellings attached to each other, such as townhomes and with manufactured housing, as defined by RSA 67431, which gets into, what's the difference between manufactured modular, all of that, but what the statute is actually saying there is that you can restrict those styles of structures from having an accessory dwelling unit, but not from being the accessory dwelling unit, if that makes sense. So, just wanted to, I don't know if there's any questions or anything, but, okay. So I think we've got a few things to work on with this.
Paul, can you use the mic? Sorry, thanks.
Clarification, if I own a lot, and on that lot, my house is a, what do you call?
Manufactured home.
Yeah. If I want to put another house on that, how is this limiting me, or is it limiting me?
So, the law gives us the power to constrain manufactured homes from having one. In that situation, if that.
The law, the law from the state level constrains that.
It gives us the power to constrain that, we don't have a constraint, however, if you are on your own lot in that situation, and you had a manufactured home that was two bedrooms, less than 1,000 square feet, all of those provisions met, and you wanted to build a single-family home, your single-family home could take the place of the primary unit, and the manufactured become the subordinate ADU.
Right.
So there's, even if we had something on the books, there's that sort of backdoor workaround, so it's a, it is interesting. That being said, in a community with a manufactured home park, I think that's a very real thing to think about, we don't have one, and so, I think for us, it doesn't have an applicable use right now. We do have one manufactured home in the town of New London, that's, there's only one, and you wouldn't necessarily know because it's on a full foundation, and, you know, it doesn't look the same as one, but it is legally one, because the chassis is still under the foundation, but.
I don't want to get into that, but, is it, should we take that as something to talk about when we're talking about these cottages and things like that?
You mean the cottage clusters?
Yes, well, cottages and clusters.
So I believe the way that the cottage, I didn't bring that stuff with me today, but I think there is, I think it says, built as single-family or duplex in them, right? And so, manufactured is not single-family, in the same sense, so it would have to say as manufactured. I mean, we do technically allow manufactured home parks, because we have to by law, and so, that's not, we're not allowed to say no to them. I think you'd be seeing them built all over the state if they made financial sense, you know, obviously, there are some pockets where they are more prevalent, I think the vast majority of the state, the, the land costs and the implementation costs are, are too high, but, I do want to jump to one other thing, not related to this necessarily, but to just give you guys an update on, Tim and I had a meeting last week with the consultants and Peter Nichols to kind of talk about overall objectives and strategies of zoning amendments, and, you know, last week's discussion was, I think, one of the best zoning amendment discussions we've had in my years working with the board. Obviously, there have been other very robust discussions about lights and things like that, but it was a, it was just, it was a very good discussion, that I think we want to make sure that those two potential changes, the cottage clusters and the institutional changes, get the time that they deserve, as being the two pieces from all of the forums that really had the most interest and the most, I think, favorable opinion from folks, and that the other things that were on that list, like making modifications to the PUD and the, the cluster subdivisions and home conversions, they are very important pieces of the puzzle at some point, but our efforts may not be best utilized between now and mid-December in jumping into those three further, that spending the time on the two that have the most palatable approach, the most potential, I think, to offer some flexibility, is probably the wisest, knowing that we don't want to overwhelm voters in the number on there, so, all five were not probably going to be proposed, I think everyone's kind of understood that from the beginning, that it would be whittled down, but also, we're, the members of the planning board and the housing commission are going to have the job, once it's decided what goes forward, to help their, their fellow community members understand this, and so, what capacity do we have to really help people fully understand the proposals that will be on the ballot, and so, the work that's been done on those other three potential modifications doesn't go anywhere. We have those, those suggestions, we, assuming that the budgets all move forward and everything, there's a modest amount, I think it's $10,000, proposed in next year's housing commission budget for consultants, again, for, among other things, too, but, that we could say, next October, we say, okay, things have gone pretty well, let's dust off the, the cluster subdivision modifications, bring the consultants back, engage this process again, and then walk through on a more detailed approach of just that one, or just those two, whatever it may be, to kind of tier them. I think that the, the overall consensus was, don't bite off more than we can chew, don't bite off more than the community can chew, change is going to be a slow iterative process, and that's what will make people more comfortable, and I think make all of us more comfortable, and so, that was the overall feeling from that group, of how we would dedicate the next two sessions. I think, any initial thoughts people have, you know, it'd be great to hear, we more or less wanted to just introduce that line of thinking to you today, and then, sort of let you guys think about it between now and next Friday, when we're back with the housing commission, and then sort of all have that, I mean, we're going to continue on the discussions we were having last week on those ordinances, but then just have a sort of more overarching conversation of, this is where we're sort of feeling, is everyone on board with that? So, if there's any initial thoughts anyone wants to share, you know, happy to, to hear them, if you think we're wildly off-base, you know, I guess that might be helpful to hear, but just something to think about between now and next Friday.
Yeah, thanks, Adam, that, that's a good recitation of that, so, if, and if anybody has thoughts between now and next Friday, and you want to talk about it, I'm always available as well, so.
And then I think the sort of thing to be further in the back of your mind, but to be sort of thinking about, is post-January 1st, when this gets to public hearing, the second week of January, and then potentially, the fourth week of January, if we had a second public hearing, how do you guys see yourselves playing into the public education side of things? I think the housing commission, that is very much part of their role as a housing commission, and something that they can very much be helpful with, but how do we make sure that people understand them? I'm not sure it's showing up to big forums and sort of listening to someone lecture about them, I think it's probably more on an individual networking basis, and so, how to make those sort of one-on-one connections, or, you know, two-on-five, or whatever it may be, to just sort of be thinking about that, how do we make sure people understand these, for whatever it is that goes forward, what's required by statute, and you all remember, there's a little objective that goes on the ballot, that will say, you know, this is required per, per House bill, yada, 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 so that people understand that, but also, just how to be a bit more proactive. It's a funny spot for, you know, staff to be in, we really can be informative and try to explain things, but as far as convincing, you know, a lot of that falls to the members, you guys, as, as the volunteer residents, to sort of lobby, not lobby necessarily, but to, yeah. So anyways, something to think about, regardless of which amendments we decide on, that's something we're going to have to think about, so I think it's a discussion we can probably have, you know, after the holidays, but just sort of keep it on your mind.
Paul, can you use the, use the mic? Thanks, thanks, Adam.
How well organized is the opposition?
I don't know that there is any opposition right now, and maybe there, there's always opposition to something that's proposed from a government, right? But I don't think we know that yet, and so, I, I hope that we can approach it not as looking at it as necessarily opponents, but, you know, the, from a perspective of, how do we help, you know, people understand, and I think the process that has gone in through the Housing Opportunities Grant has kept the conversation going, and the awareness going, and the understanding going, that hopefully, it's not, you know, in that, that vein.
I just think we'll need to do, as Adam said, just a better job educating than we did last time, which was my fault, I kind of sort of saw it as, the planning board already has a platform, and so therefore, our point of view is already out there, I don't think that worked, obviously, so, I think, just being a little bit more mindful and thoughtful about, like Adam said, one-on-one conversations, maybe something in municipal matters, like, you know, something, get a letter to the editor in the inner town, whatever it would be, whatever we decide it would be, I think we can do that, just to say, here's why we're thinking, why we're thinking, and just explain to people that some of this is because it's required by state law, and, and I think a part of the story should be that we're holding off on these other things that we think have value, but in order to not introduce too much at one time to allay those concerns, then I think that we can say, we're doing that as well, you know, to, we're trying to take a measured approach.
And things like engaging, you know, especially for the institutions, engaging the partners of those institutions to help explain to the public, you know, why it is they feel these changes are necessary, and how that ultimately supports their mission as an educational institution or a hospital, and those are things where I think we've perhaps relied on those organizations, you know, for like the lights, for example, we relied on them to sort of handle that in their own way, but maybe we want to be more methodical and, and partner on that a little bit closer this time.
Paul's point, I, I think, having gone through the process with the AD, the detached ADUs, I can list out the 10 people that were most vocal and organizational and know them all, and, you know, they expressed exactly why they had concerns, so, I mean, I think, I agree with you, the, the way to, part of the way to do that whole thing is to reach out to those people and, and talk to them.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I agree with that, so we need to wrap it up, Adam, is there anything else we need to go over?
Nope, see you again next Friday, 7:30, same time, same place.
Oh. Yeah, wasn't, I, sure, Rich, if you just want to come and use the mic real quick and just turn it on, I apologize, we're just trying to, to wrap it up by nine.
Rich Eppstein, resident, and everything I've heard about the ADUs, it makes perfect sense to me, especially, you know, doing, you know, change for that, what's required, and then maybe another change for what's optional, and short-term rentals was a perfect example of something that I think is worthy of being within that optional side, partly just because my eyesight's only so good, I think you're leaving in the line for only one ADU allowed, so, would the implication be in, if they have an attached ADU, they can't have a detached and vice versa? Okay, is that, thank you for confirming what I thought I read, but there are, I, I think there are some other things that are worth looking at in those optional changes, even what you alluded to about, you know, townhouses and things like that, you know, I think there are a few others, so I won't take more time, but I think there are more things to look at, is my opinion.
Yeah, no, definitely more to come, we're not done with this, but it's a, that's a great point, though, Rich, and I think we will proceed that way, where we have the must-haves, must-pass kind of thing, and then we'll, anything addition, any additional things we want to do as well, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And just one point to make on the townhouses, and the, any kind of a development that falls under a homeowners association, I think any of us who have, have or do own in a homeowners association probably is familiar with the pages of their rules that come, and I think, you know, I would almost say 100% of the time, condos and, and townhouses have their own provision that you can't add an additional, because everybody's deed is the same percentage of interest, or, or divided up based on. Right, so it, it could be something that ends up being redundant, but, but, just to point that out, though, when HOAs are involved, you know, it does provide another layer of private constraint.
Awesome, thanks, Rich, thanks, Adam, for that update, so, we will see you all back here next Friday, thanks, everybody, for coming, I appreciate it, on a Friday morning.
Do we need to adjourn?
Sure, need a motion to adjourn?
So.
A second, all in favor? Hi, thanks, everybody, appreciate it.